It's a little past 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Commissioner Pena and Commissioner Sines being absent. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. If anyone would please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay. First item is the minutes. Quite a chunk of them.
Two months.
Yeah, two months, yeah.
Your Honor, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the Senate.
Second to move, your honor. Moved and second to approve. Discussion. Honorable members, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is the claims. Mr. Carter, are they in order?
The claims have all been reviewed and are all in order.
I move that we approve the claims.
I'll take another motion.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. Honorable members, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, there's people that have presentations from out of town, so we'll go ahead and take them first if it's all right with the court. If we go to item 14, it's to approve a proclamation on the summer meal awareness program. Ms. Hernandez.
Good morning, Judge Vera and Commissioners. Indeed, we are in the summertime now, and it is summer meal time. My name is Elaine Hernandez, and I work with Baylor University's Texas Hunger Initiative, and we're here to support and promote the USDA and the Texas Department of Agriculture summer meals programs. But we'd like to start by recognizing, first of all, the role of the precincts with your food pantries and your relationship with the South Texas Food Bank. We also have this summer, the summer meals programs that are being sponsored by Roma ISD, Rio Grande City CISD, and Catholic Charities in San Isidro. Last year, they served over 120,000 meals, and this summer, we have 41 sites so far that have been approved by the Texas Department of Agriculture. We also want to recognize the WIC program, the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, the Head Start program, and all the adult daycare centers that are here in the county, making sure that seniors and family members do not go hungry. And of course, Amigos del Valle also has a Meals on Wheels program here. And finally, the SNAP promotion, the SNAP program. So we are bringing together all of the stakeholders here in the county that are ensuring that no one will go hungry this summer in Starr County, and we want to recognize and thank everyone for their support.
Thank you.
We also have a poster if you would like to promote the summer meals at your Commissioners' headquarters, at the food pantries.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the proclamation, your honor.
I'll take another motion.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. Under discussion, I just want to thank you, Elaine, for all the work that you do here in the county, and of course, your staff. I think it's been a very successful program, and we look forward to working with you and continue working with you, hopefully, in the future. So thank you. Thank you all very much.
We have a proclamation. Do you want to go ahead and take the picture?
Well, let me call for the vote.
Okay.
Honorable members, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. You want to take a picture now, or?
We have the damage to you.
Okay. Yes. I'm very grateful with this, but do the business.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. If I may, let's go back to item number six, and this is a presentation on reaching access and challenges by Ms. Barbara Shoen.
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 Thank you very much for your time. I will be brief. I do have a handout with more information if you need it. I see you have a long agenda. I am from the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. We have been funded for a grant to study the needs of individuals with developmental disabilities in all four counties: Starr, Willacy, Ogaldo, and Cameron County. And what we are doing is an asset and needs assessment. So we're looking at the assets that are available in each community, developing resource guides and a community map. But we're also doing outreach to understand the needs of underserved populations. We have two outreach objectives. One, we're going to, we have funding to hold two town hall meetings in each county where we bring together family members, caregivers, stakeholders of individuals with developmental disabilities, to actually talk about what their unmet needs are. They may be transportation, they may be access to education, any barriers they're encountering. We are also going to conduct a survey of caregivers, and once we're finished, the outcome will be a report to the Texas Council for Developmental Disabilities to address the unmet needs of this population in Lower Rio Grande Valley. All right? They've sent us, they actually came to us and said, "We know the Lower Rio Grande Valley is underserved. We know that there is much need here. What we need from you is documentation." And so that's what we're doing. We're pulling through the surveys and town hall meetings. We hope to document what the needs are for these communities and counties so that they can report in their state year plan to the state for funding and outreach.
Okay. What are the ages of individuals that you're looking for?
All ages.
All ages?
Yep, youth and adult.
And this is both physical and mentally?
It is developmental disability, just developmental disability. I mean, they may also have a physical disability, but the funding source is specifically for developmental disabilities. They're funded through HHS and also the Administration on Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. So they get their funding from the national government.
Well, certainly, we welcome you into our county, and I'm sure the Commissioners will be available for whatever information you all need.
Right. The main thing we need is for you to make a decision as to which precincts you would like us to hold the town hall meetings in.
How many town?
Two.
Two?
Yeah.
Well, I would, that's hard for me to decide, but I'm sure the Commissioners-
That's why I'm here.
Yeah. I guess if we could get one on both ends of the county, of course, Rio is our biggest populated area.
Sure.
Can we have three?
Unfortunately, I only have funding for two, because I also had to provide transcriptionists, and so that is about $3,000 a county for that service. Sign language interpreters, and then headsets for Spanish or English-speaking people, because we will have a bilingual. Our town hall meetings will-
Ma'am, let me ask you, only two town hall meetings are the sort you're going to have?
A total of eight. Total of eight across four counties.
Yeah, no, but here, two.
Two, yeah.
I don't think you could even get 10% of the disabled people to come by and ask for their need. I doubt it. It's my opinion, or just, but to me-
Yeah, I guess what we can try and do is get the organizations that work with these people-
Yes.
-to go, come in here and help us identify the needs, because as the Commissioner mentioned, you know, our people are not going to travel this far. One, you know, they're not capable.
Uh-huh.
It'd be an inconvenience for them. But we can certainly try and get the people that work with them to come out, and maybe through the survey, that would also help.
Right. Is there a way that maybe we could hold them then at organizations that serve the populations? So that, because they really want, I mean, the crux of this is to really hear from the people in some form.
Yeah.
And again, it could be at an organization that serves the populations.
Ma'am, I think the school district will have a list, I mean, and they know about all the children that are disabled and their need of this kind of services. I think the best count that you could have to be was the school district, because they have that program with the handicap or something like that.
Yeah, special ed.
Special ed. So they should have, I would say, more than 50% of the information of the disabled people. Then probably, the next step would go to the home health providers that assist these people with disabilities, that qualify for providers and all this kind of stuff. I think that would be the best route to go to get most of the information, in my opinion.
Right, and we are doing that. We actually have an advisory council made up of agencies throughout the counties-
I think that's a-
...that are giving us voice. But, you know, again, the crux of this funding is to actually hear from the caregivers.
I think that's a very good idea. You know, we have three school districts, however, two of them are the biggest school districts-
Uh-huh.
-which is Roma and Rio.
Sure.
Maybe we could have them in those two areas.
Perfect, yes.
That would include 90% of the county-
Perfect.
...would be represented.
And we are able to provide transportation.
Oh, excellent.
Yes.
I think that's the best route to go.
Yeah, and we're working with, the plan would be to, if we could, to work with your promotoras to get to, you know, again, those underserved marginalized populations. So if we could work with your county workers and promotoras to get the word out to-
Yeah, if you work with the Commissioners, they'll get the word out, I guarantee you.
Perfect. Okay. All right. And then again, so the second phase will be countywide survey. And again, we'll be working with all of the school districts. They're on our list, all of the school district special education directors as part of this outreach.
Well, thank you very much for being here this morning, and again, we look forward to working with you. And again, all those people that I asked for to come before, because I know you're from out of town-
Yeah.
-you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our meetings, but I know you all are busy, and you might have to leave.
Thank you, I do appreciate that.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll probably head back, because they have other meetings to go to.
Okay.
But thank you so much for your time and support.
Thank you very much.
All right. Great, thank you.
Okay. I guess, let's go to item number 12. Mando, that's on the approval of the preliminary plat for La Mulada.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. At this time, Your Honor, I'd like to present for preliminary approval for La Mulada grand slots. They're located on Commissioner Alvarez's precinct. I'd like to stress that at this time, the grandfather, because they've been working on it before, or they're in the process, they're 10 and 12 acre tracts, and they're pretty much done with it.
What do you mean grandfather?
Well, they've been working on it since November. There was not a misunderstanding, sort of like-
Yeah, what happened, let me shed some light on this. The handouts that were being given had 10 acres instead of the 20 that was, had been approved here by the court. Now, I did meet with a developer, and he showed me where most of these properties were bought, two, three, four, at a time by the same person. So even though they're platted 10 acres, they're selling by 20, 30, and 40 acres. So, you know, honestly, I, you know, we'd like for everyone to follow the rules, you know, as were set, but I think this is, if anyone, this one does qualify for variance in, for the 10 acres.
I do not have a problem with the subdivision itself, Your Honor. The only issue that I had was that nothing had come to the court, no preliminary plans. Just in case one of those people that bought this property wants to sell, how could they sell? That was my only issue. The subdivision, it was constructed professionally. I don't have a problem with the construction of the subdivision. It's just that the plating, the paperwork necessary, so people have titles in case they want to sell.
Yeah, and that was what we discussed with the developer.
Right, and I do have letters of commitment from their water supplier, from El Salz, and from Medina Electric. There are letters of commitment to furnish their services.
That the services will be of aid.
Yes, sir.
And this is only preliminary approval?
Yes, sir.
Does it move that we approve the preliminary approval of La Mulada subdivision?
Okay. I have a motion, a second to approve the preliminary plat. Any further discussion? Honorable members, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's see, who else? Who else? Let's go to item 16. This is our delinquent attorneys receive bids. Lucy, good morning. Welcome.
How are you?
Doing well.
Lucy Canales, on behalf of Leinbarger, you have before you some tax resale properties. We have three bids, I mean, 39 bids that we received on properties in Campo Beo, in the Roma area, and one private bid, which is the very last one in your all's packet for consideration. I believe all the ones in Campo Beo are vacant lots.
Lucy, are some of these lots flood zone?
My understanding, I got some information, some of them may be. I believe the, when we conducted the sale, we advised people they possibly could be in flood zone areas, and of course, the properties are sold as is with no warranties as far as a tax resale deed.
They're in the packet towards the-
All these lots have already been sold before.
These properties were posted for a tax sale, and nobody bid on them.
No, no, but when they planted at this Campo Verde, Campo Beo, the developers sold all these properties? Were they sold to, were they still at the, or the developers or the owners still? Have they been sold to other people or not?
Aye.
Let me check on this.
Where is Campo Beo?
Apparently Campo Beo is in the Roma area.
With the developer.
Let me get, let me get.
They got the wrong name on it.
Campo Beo.
One moment. I need to undo the packet.
Because there are 39 lots?
There are 39 bids that we received, and if you look at the third page in your packet, there are 28 are Campo Beo, and there's Lot 6 Falconaire re-subdivision also.
But you don't know exactly where Campo Beo is located, right?
There's maps attached to your, let me check.
Anybody know the area of Campo Beo is? I mean, come on, speak up, man. We need to know.
Ah, see, that's right. That's right.
The map will show you kind of where it is off of, you turn off of Guerra Avenue?
Yeah, it's where Citizens Bank is in Roma.
Behind?
Towards the river, yeah, back there. It's all flood zone.
It's all flood zone?
Yeah.
You are, okay, and this?
These are the highlighted ones.
Okay, yeah, but the judge said, they're in a flood zone.
Yeah. See, the bank is here somewhere.
So they're behind the bank?
Yeah.
Are these people that buy and own it in the flood zone yet? Then they will have a problem like-
I don't think, not one lot, they're all for sale, or they're all foreclosed, or that's probably what it was, you know. When was the subdivision done?
But the people that are bidding, do they know that it's in a flood zone?
Well, and that's the reason I asked, you know, because it's-
If they believe they're going to build a house, then we got a problem.
I believe some of them- I think they were advised on-
The entity should have given this land to the wildlife or something, instead of creating more problems like the one we have right now?
Yeah, I think the owner has, is deceased. I think it was J.C. Yeller, if I'm not mistaken, and that whole family is deceased. But, yeah, that was going to be my next question.
How many acres are there, Madam Manager?
39 lot?
No, there's 30, 29 were posted for sale.
Yeah, but how much acreage would it be?
They're a fifth of an acre, kind of, I don't know.
Why wouldn't we, Judge, I don't know if it can be done, dissolve that subdivision and sell them as a whole, as a four lots, I mean, five acres, four acres, or three acres?
They'll still want to build a house.
But not that, with the restriction that no residential house or anything be built there.
We should give it to the wildlife, to some kind of wildlife preservation.
Whatever the court, I mean, basically, right now, that all the taxing entities own the property.
Yeah, because what's going to happen, you know, I think, is that whoever bidded on these don't know what they did, so once they find out they can't do anything with it, they're not going to pay taxes, and we're going to be in the same situation five years from now.
Is it the same buyer, one buyer only, or all different one?
The buyers are through, 2 through 25 is one individual.
2 through 25?
There's different individuals, from what I can tell, purchased the properties.
One thing they know is-
No, different individuals. Some bought a few of them, but, you know, they're all different buyers.
I honestly think, you know, we should, as Commissioner has mentioned, you know, just-
Did you get money for them already?
We're holding it in trust. We haven't-
Because I think these people should be led-
We can, I mean, we can undo, return the money. Because we don't, when we get the money, we hold until all the taxing jurisdictions approve.
Yeah.
So, I mean, at this point, we could do what you all are suggesting, and then just return the money to the, to the bidders.
See, no, see, no, we're going to have the same problem.
They're not going to build anything.
We're going to have the same problem down the road.
I would say dissolve the subdivision and put it out for sale. That's an acre. Somebody wants to buy it for a ranchette or whatever.
There's only a couple of lots that might be all right, and those are Block 8, 1 and 2.
Are these within the serial limits of Roma? They are, right?
Yes. Why don't, if I could recommend to the court, why don't you not take any action so I can do the actual research to make sure that we can go and dissolve? Because these have already been assessed on the tax roll. These lots as is. We would probably have to remove these then from the tax roll-
Right.
-if the subdivision is dissolved.
Yeah.
I just want to-
Okay.
I think we need to check-
I think that's a good, good request.
Versus you all approving it, and then we have issues with flood, they can't get permits, and all of the above.
You don't want to do that?
Yeah.
Just no action taken, and do more research?
Yeah, and we need to find, we need to find a solution, because if we sell them, the problems will continue.
Exactly.
And somebody go build something up there without a permit, then they want to want services there.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We have problems by ourselves. We don't need them.
Right, and we don't want to recommend that, create some more problems. The last one we have is a private bid that I believe had been brought up for your all's consideration before. It is-
Item 17?
It is item, actually, the very last one on the, on our list.
On the list?
This property is Lot 4, Block 6, El Chaparral subdivision. The amount of the bid is 15,000. This is a, had been brought to your all's consideration before. This property was assessed by, as two separate lots, so they were posted for sale as two separate lots. After the sale, realized that there's a home, a structure, and a carport on both lots. And the appraisal district is not assessing it as, you know, the two lots with the structure on it. So the people that bought one of the lots are putting in a bid to buy the adjacent lot.
Probably, the general that owned the house encroached to the next lot. You know, he built-
A carport, I believe.
-the garage, the carport, following in the next, in the other lot, so, I mean-
The structures on both-
I don't think you can cut off there.
So we're foreclosing on both lots?
We already did.
You already did?
We already did, and one was purchased, and that, the purchaser of that one lot is making a bid on this lot.
On the tongue croach. We already had bought some, a guy, what was it, Mendoza, they returned the money because he thought he had bought two lots, but it was only one that it was-
They were assessing both lots with the structure on one, when it's actually on both.
Well, I think that makes sense, you know, it has to be the same bidder that-
I don't think you can remove the guy from there. I might as well accept, how much is 15,000?
15,000, so we'd ask, we recommend that you all accept this bid, which is item number-
I have a motion, a second to go ahead and accept.
Is that bid only?
That one only.
TS 10-64, which is a private bid. Honorable members, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And then on the other, we'll have no action.
We'll do the research, and I'll, you know, I'll make it a point, and I'll come back on that one.
The TS-10-64.
I have no further business.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lucy, you also had a resolution authorizing tax resale?
So we're only going to ask for the resolution on the property that you all approved.
Okay, so-
On that one item.
One item, okay. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll just hold it.
Second motion.
Moved and second. Honorable members, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
But that, the guy that bidded that property, the owner of that house right now at this time, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have trouble, any problems again?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time? If not, we'll go back to our reports. The Gas Department?
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. My report is in your package. I really don't have anything else to add to it, unless you all have questions. Pretty brief. We're doing good.
We never got together, Jim, to go over an estimate of how much we would need in the budget.
I mapped out a couple of places where we left off replacing the old PVC. At Walmart was those new subdivisions, and I've got, I've got the map plotted out as to-
Whenever you're going to have a chance.
As to where the lines are. All we need is codes.
You're going to extend there at Walmart?
No.
No, it's to replace them.
We're replacing all PVCs, Commissioner. We're mandated by state to replace anything that's iron, steel, or PVC. And the steel is almost complete, and we have to, we have to, whatever's not complete is the only two crossings that are on Highway 83 before Stripes and on Highway 3167, which are the two arroyos. We have to go underground with those, with those, with those lines. It's boring. We did, I did get an estimate for that. Both of them will cut, will run around $20,000 to bore with the casing. They have to have casing because of the creek.
I understand that pretty soon, they're going to start moving dirt on those, on the new mall that you can- I understand that, pretty soon, they're gonna start, they're gonna start moving dirt on those, on the new mall that they're planning to build across.
Yes.
Do you know anything about that?
Yes, uh, Rose is not here, right? Uh, yeah, they're, they're, uh, pretty close to finalizing her.
Are they, is, are they gonna make sure include that they have the gas services, you know?
Across from Walmart?
We, okay. We offer, as soon as we see construction, we stop by and offer gas service to colonias or subdivisions.
It's a, it's a shopping street?
It's a shopping mall, yes. We'll, we'll, we'll keep in touch with it. But, but this is, this is what we talked about last, at the last meeting, about the state mandating. Uh, now they're, they're saying seventy-five hundred feet a year that we have to, to do of all lines. By, I was gonna mention, by the end of December of twenty eighteen, we've gotta have those two steel ga, uh, steel places in place. So, we're looking at spending twenty thousand dollars.
Five thousand, please, Commissioner?
You're the budget guys. You're the budget guys, yeah.
Any questions? Thank you.
Uh, transfer station?
Judge and Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
The report is before you, and, um, the page that we provide for you are the expenses that we have. And, um, happy to report that we have a surplus this, uh, past month for four thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. We've had a lot of breakdowns, too many, and, uh, we've had a lot of expenses. Any questions?
Yeah, Raina, I, I saw Mario here, he, he late?
Yeah, because we have another breakdown. Our scale just broke down.
I had asked you, because, uh, Patricia Hernandez contacted me on, and we're still being back and forth on the tires, that they have to be only cut in two.
Okay.
Mario said he was gonna call.
I, I actually looked into it, Commissioner. When we applied for our permit, TCQ told us that we needed to have our tires quartered at our transfer station. I called, uh, the landfill, uh, where we go take our, our, where they transport our, our waste. And I want, I asked them to provide it, uh, to us in writing, that they'll accept it half only. They haven't been able to do that, because I understand that in order for it to be landfilled, it needs to be quartered. So if they accept it over there in half, I need something in writing, cause then I don't want them to blame Stark County for sending tires in half.
I understand, because we had a conversation, because Mr. Hernandez was out there where that gentleman made that, that tire cutter for me. And he said he was looking for, for one for himself, because he deals with tires, and that he just wanted bill to be cut in half. I said, well, I understand his quarters. He said, no, you're wrong. He said, I already talked to the gentleman at the landfill in...
If they provide it to us in writing that it's fine, it's less work for us.
Yeah, because...
But we don't wanna get in trouble either.
Tires is becoming a big problem. I mean, it just, it seems like, I mean, they're hatching. I don't know where, where so many tires is coming from, you know, but they're out there, they place them up in front of their houses. And we had a guy that we already caught him again, just like, and I, I told my, my guys to call, Arnufo or somebody. We went out there and checked. This guy had a hundred and some odd tires behind his house. This is the little guy that goes out there and buys tires from the, from the tire shops. He charges them a dollar, he takes them back to his house, and then he puts ten, five, three, and, and the front of the other one, we pick them up, you know. We already caught him twice, and I said, we're not gonna pick up those tires, because, you know, he's making, he's making business out of it, you know. And, you know, like I said, it's incredible. We got pictures where you, you pick up all the tires in front of their houses. Two, three weeks later, you find two, three tires in your, right in front of the same house. I don't know if they buy used tires only, or, but it's not only one. That's the only guy that we found out that he's, we don't get making business out of that. Because he, we, we saw a hun, over a hundred tires this last time that we went by his house. We took, uh, they were supposed to take pictures and send them to Armando, or, 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 what's his name?
Arnufo.
Arnufo to go see the guy, see what, what's going on.
We'll have code enforcement, will you?
I was, I was, uh, yes, we have code enforcement. What, what could they be charged with?
Probably violation of TCQ's, uh...
But can we charge them, or would it have to be TCQ?
I mean, I can look at Judge Arican, that has to do with it.
Can, can you check that? So we know what, what to charge them with?
Any other questions?
I know, hey, there's...
We have code enforcement that is a piece of it?
No. Por eso, you know...
Raina, he, he told me that you had received a brochure about, uh, a machine that would, would cut the...
The wall.
The walls from the truck tires?
At this time, Commissioner, um, we're working with the COG to see if we can get it through a grant. This past month, Judge, that I went to the COG meeting, uh, the application's already, uh, gonna be out for us to apply. And the way that works, Commissioner, is that since we have an existing project, the Tire Recycling Center, uh, we can, uh, apply again, uh, for that tire cutter machine.
And how mu, how much is the grant for?
Well, it's not only for Stark County, of course, it's, it's for...
We, we compete for that money.
Yes.
We compete for that money.
We compete for that money. I think it's something like sixty-something thousand dollars. Sixty, I'm not sure if it's like sixty-two or sixty-four thousand.
Yeah, usually, the one that, that we compete the most with is, uh, Laredo.
Laredo, yes.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but, eh, how much that, that, that machine cost? Do you have an estimate of that?
I think it's like thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
So, I'm hoping that, that we can get it.
I mean, can we get, uh, two, because, I mean, uh, we, we, like I said, we're doing it by hand, right, both this point in time, Jay. We do, we get jigsaws and cut off the, the walls, and then put them to the cutting machine, but it's, it's a lot of work, and a lot of blades that we...
I got the quote, Commissioner, on Friday, and it, I think it was like thirty-four thousand.
I, I'm trying to get one built, you know, I'd like to see how, how that machine, will you have brochure, give it to me?
Sure.
We're gonna, I'd like to take it to that guy, see if we can, we can make it work with, with an attachment with the one I've got.
I will. Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, taxes, sister?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here to give the report, the monthly report. You have it in front of you. And the total county what collections current and delinquent for June, uh, twenty eighteen were five hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred. In June twenty seventeen, there were six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred. There was a total collection of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected two million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand more than last year. Our total current collections for Stark County entities are one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred. Current collections in June twenty seventeen were one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred. There was a total current collection of seven thousand, five hundred, more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected one million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for twenty eighteen, just for Stark County, were one hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred. Total delinquent collections in June twenty seventeen were two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred. There was a total delinquent collection of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred, less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred, more than last year. We have collected the, a hundred and thirty, and three percent of our projected current tax collections for the twenty eighteen fiscal year. This percentage includes five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that were collected as a result of supplement accounts that were added to the tax rule after certification. Without counting supplements, we have collected twelve million, eight hundred and ninety, ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred, which is equivalent to ninety-nine percent of our projected collections. Projected collections remaining without supplements are one hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred. Any questions?
So, actually, without the supplements, what's the collection that we have collected of the, the budget, the projected in the budget?
Without the supplements, it's ninety-nine percent of our collections.
Of the current taxes?
Right.
On the delinquent taxes, then, uh, how are we at right now, this point in time? The current, the delinquent tax, the projected, what we estimated that we were gonna collect is delinquent taxes. How much have we collected at this point in time?
Of the delinquent? We don't, I don't have a percentage, uh, on the delinquent. We have, and, I have it as a whole. Now, if you need further information...
Hold on, let me ask you something. So, do you know we collected already the estimated amount that we were projecting?
For, for this year?
And only delinquent?
No, no, because, uh, delinquency just started the, last week. So any money that they collect from now on through the remainder of the year is probably all delinquent.
It's all delinquent from now on.
Because delinquent, it, it starts being delinquent on July first.
But how about last year? Are, are we, we getting the report from last year, from this budget year?
Yeah, for this, for this year, we don't know. Last year, we collected a hundred percent, or maybe a little more...
A little more.
Than a hundred percent of what had been projected, in delinquent.
Okay. Because I asked, and we had a conversation there at the, the appraisal district about the, and I asked these people to bring in the top one hundred delinquent accounts. Apparently, they had it, but they forgot it. So, as soon as they get them, I'm pretty sure they'll send you a copy. And, uh, we need to know who are those people, and why they have not been collected. Have you had a concern?
Right.
And, and that's it. And it's just a fair concern. It's your job to do tax collection.
Yes, but it's...
Everybody has to pay taxes. I don't care how influential they are, they need to pay their taxes.
Right, but if they're, they're delinquent...
I already told them to bring in the top one hundred accounts, seeing where they're at. Why have they not been paying their taxes?
Uh, and those accounts will, I'll forward them to Lime Barbers, so, for collections.
Well, they, they know they got them.
Oh, they already have them?
They have them, they're gonna bring them to us.
Oh, okay.
Because, I mean, you said, you, there were some big accounts there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna email them, and I'll, I'll forward them out.
And I thought, I asked for them to get me...
We have been working on...
Personal property and, uh, and, and the real estate. We wanna know both of them.
Okay.
So we can make sure that, you know, see why they're not being collected.
If we, we're success on, on collecting all those accounts, we'll, we'll be good.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We wanna know that, you know.
Our county would be on a debt.
You brought it up to me, but I said, and we'll find out who they are, and see why have they not been collected.
We'll, we'll be working on those accounts...
Okay, no problem.
For collections in the future. Thank you. Any other question?
Thank you. Uh, county clerk? It's, it's their...
Table?
Uh, 'cause we have it.
Yeah, no, Mr. Juan, but he needs to...
To table?
Yeah, he needs to...
Okay. Sheriff's office, huh?
Judge, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
You have the report in front of you. The total revenues for the month of June was two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's with the average inmates of one hundred and fifty-five federal inmates. You have any questions?
You know, uh, I must commend you. This is the first time that I have ever seen, in twenty years, a quarter of a million coming in a month. So, uh, you know, I, I commend you all for your efforts with the, with the federal prisoners, cause that's, that's what brings in the money. And, and hopefully, y'all can, can beat that. Now, we, we're, we're thankful that, that you keep it at this level, Chief.
Yes, this is the first month that, uh, in, like you said, over twenty years, that this number has, uh, been so high.
Yeah, I've never seen it, yeah. Very good. Any questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
International Bridge?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners. This is the traffic report for June two thousand and eighteen. The total revenue, it's two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight with fifty cents. And we show an increase of six hundred and seventy-five for the month of June two thousand and eighteen compared to the month of June two thousand and seventeen. And we show a decrease of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars on collections for the month of June two thousand and eighteen compared to the month of May two thousand and eighteen. And we have other collections of six hundred dollars and fifty-six cents, I'm sorry, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the grand total collections for June two thousand and eighteen is two hundred and five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four with eighty-seven cents. Do you have any questions?
I guess the decrease is probably attributed to the pedestrian of students, right?
Yeah, and also, we, there's been violence, and it's also causing the decrease. Any other...
Any questions?
Thank you.
Uh, treasurer's report?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I'm reporting for the month of May two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the general fund had two point five million. This is one point three million more than at the same time last year. Uh, for the road and bridge, um, it had six hundred and four thousand dollars, being a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars more than at the same time last year. The total cash amount of cash in bank and investment accounts in the custody of the county treasurer as of the end of this period covered by this report is fourteen point two million dollars. This overall amount is three point two million dollars more than at the same time last year. And the schedules are attached in the report. Uh, we continue to monitor our depository accounts to ensure their safety. The combined debt for Stark County was four point two million, being one point three million more than at the same time last year. And, uh, for the pledge collaterals with, uh, the bank, the county's amounts in deposits were well collateralized at a hundred and twenty-four percent. This pledge level is nineteen percent above the LGC chapter twenty-two fifty-seven point zero twenty-two requirement, and fourteen percent above the, uh, contract terms with Longstreet National Bank. The twenty eighteen budget includes the borrowing of a new one million dollar tax anticipation note. The borrowing of a new one million dollar note is still pending state approval. It is also necessary to report that if the state does not approve the new note, then the county will have to lower the twenty eighteen budget an additional one million dollars. This pre-borrowing, borrowing process may take forty-five to ninety days. And since the county started this year with a negative fund balance in its operating fund, it is important to take action to prevent another Stark County budget shutdown.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Hollister?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, you have a copy of my report in your package. I'll, um, it's a long, lengthy report. I'll try to make it, uh, as, make my presentation as brief as possible. As of June thirtieth, the general fund cash reconciled balance was one million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars with eighty-six cents. The road and bridge fund reconciled cash balance at June thirtieth was three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred, two dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the payroll clearing, uh, cash balance after the payroll last Friday was five hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents. The expenditure report is summarized there, starting on the bottom of the first page. Uh, the general fund as a whole has expended seventy-four point seventy-one percent, and has four million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars remaining available. Within the general fund are the following departments. The county judge department has expended sixty... The county judge department has expended 68.27% of that budget. The county clerk has expended 80.07% of that budget. The human resources department has expended 76.13%. The planning department expended 68.52%. Federal and state program expended 75.61%. The countywide general fund, as amended, has expended 75.05%. The contract for 911 services has expended 69.38%. The county court at law, as amended, has expended 72.31%. The 229th District Court has expended 71.46%. 381st District Court has expended 68.78%. The district clerk has expended 72.98%. At the top of page three, the county attorney has expended 87.28%. The district attorney has expended 68.1%. The county auditor has expended 69.57%. The county treasurer has expended 77.87%. The tax assessor collector's office has expended 68.75%. The building maintenance department has expended 68.61%. The detention center, as amended, has expended 78.18%. The juvenile detention center has expended 73.67%. The sheriff's department is at 74.9%. The agricultural extension service has expended 71.08%. The nutrition program is at 75.99%, and that's for all four, all four precinct nutrition programs combined. The elections administrator has expended 86.87%. There in the middle of page four, we start with a summary of the expenditure report for the road and bridge fund. The consolidated road and bridge fund has expended 73.2%. And then, within that, within that consolidated amount, precinct one has expended 73.03%. Precinct two has expended 73.89%. Precinct three has expended 77.07%. Precinct four has expended 69.13%. And the countywide road and bridge fund has expended 72.76%. Next, we will look at the, at the enterprise funds. The international bridge has expended 49.44% of its year-to-date budget. The gas operating system is, is at 64.4%. And the solid waste transfer station is at 70.79%. At the bottom of page five, we will, there's a summary of the revenue reports. The general fund current taxes has, current taxes have been received in the amount of 98.28% of the budgeted amount. Delinquent taxes have been receiving the amount of 74.44%.
Right there, that should be the answer for Commissioner Panza's question.
Yeah.
Partially, yes. It addresses that issue, yes.
The delinquent, the delinquent taxes?
Yes.
That should be the answer to your question.
But this is broken down by funds. It's not a summary. It's not a total.
That's a 98%, that's a delinquent. Current delinquent at 74%. 74.44%.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
So, we estimated that we were going to take 1.7 million, and we're just at 1.25, 2.65 million.
That's in the general.
The general?
Yes.
That's in the general fund. On page six is a list of all of the other revenue line items in the, in the general fund. I'll, I'll pick out some of the main ones. The fees of office has collected $1,462,995, which is 64.73% of the budgeted amount. The detention center has collected $1,562,814, which is 77.33% of the budgeted amount. The international, the transfers from the international bridge are only at $210,000 for the year, which is 21.43% of the budgeted amount. Building permits are, we've collected $53,642, which is, actually exceeds the budgeted, budgeted amount.
Yeah, but, but on that one, Mr. Carter, in fact, I've been trying to work with the planning department.
Yes.
It seems like everything is going to building permits. We also have fees that, for food services, we have fees that 911 charges, and they all go to building permit, and it's not, it's not quite correct. We're trying to break it up so we can allocate it.
I'll have my staff look into that and make sure we can, if we can make some adjusting entries to correct that, we will. Yes, sir. Anyway, there at the bottom of page six, the total general fund has collected 78.87% of the budgeted revenue year-to-date. And then, also there, the road and bridge fund current taxes have collected basically 100% of the budgeted amount. And the delinquent taxes on the, on top of page seven, the delinquent taxes have been collected in the amount of $426,690, which is 81.27% of the budgeted amount. Motor vehicle licenses have been collected in the amount of $610,780, which is 106% of the budgeted amount. Fines and forfeitures is at 50%. Vehicle weight fees is at 52%. Auction income is at 122%. The total road and bridge fund is at 97.01%. On the international bridge, revenue collected year-to-date is at, total revenue is at 71.66% of the budgeted amount. Of course, the vast majority of that is in the bridge tolls. The gas operating system has received 79.79% of its budgeted revenue from gas sales for the year. The solid waste transfer station has received 72.35% of its budgeted revenue from tip and And then, at the top of page eight, is a summary of, of the debt owed by Starr County. This hasn't changed much from last year, from last month. The, the tax note series 2014A has a current balance of $303,471. It's paid, it's paid on an amortization schedule of $81,011 annually. The Texas Comptroller's debt is $12,819, and that's scheduled to be paid off next month in August. The certificate of obligation 2004 has a balance of $1,066,228,000, and that's paid from the interest and sinking fund. There's an equipment loan owed to KES State Bank with a balance of $797,595,000, and that's paid on an amortization, amortization schedule of $99,699 annually. And the first payment comes due in September or October, I believe. There's a loan to a company called Revenue Markets, and that's for equipment at the international bridge. It has a current balance of $102,614. And then, there's another equipment loan for, for, for a machine to Caterpillar Financial Services, has a current balance of $45,879. And then, there's the participation with the city of Roma for the operation of the international bridge, has a balance of $822,395, for a total of $3,151,001. Below that, we have a summary of the interest and sinking fund. The total balance as of June 30th was $1,409,336, so there's a surplus of $343,108. Current taxes received are 103% of the budgeted amount. Delinquent taxes are 130% of the budgeted amount. And the expenditures from the interest and sinking fund are only, we've only made one interest payment this year, $21,778. At the bottom of page eight, unpaid invoices being held by the auditor's office. I'm very happy to report that there are none. We finally got all, got caught up and got all of our unpaid invoices resolved. And I want to say thank you to all the department heads and, and people, officials who have helped me, helped me do that, and, and my able staff, of course. At the bottom, on page nine is a summary of all of the additional revenue that has been certified by the county auditor year-to-date. There's a list of the items there, which we should all be familiar with. There's not much remaining balance available to be budgeted. Everything, everything received has been, nearly everything received has been budgeted. Any questions?
No, sir. Very informative. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Okay, I believe that was all the reports.
One table, the county pressure report.
Yeah. Auditor, take a motion to, to table the county clerk's report.
I don't want it.
Second motion. Move in second. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven is an action item, and this to approve the vendors list. Mr. Carter?
Your honor, the documentation for all the vendors has been reviewed and found to be in order.
I move that we approve the vendors list. Second, you know.
Move in second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is there just for house cleaning, and this is to adopt the, the burn ban. I realize that right now, everything's real green and pretty, I guess, if you're a rancher. With a rancher, we've, I think it'd be on the safe side.
I don't want it.
Second motion. Move in second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is an action item, and this to approve a donation for precinct four in the amount of $1,000 from EcoSite.
I don't want it.
Move in second. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10 is an action item, and this is to authorize to sell two farm tractors with bond and bond auctioneers.
Yes, there's, I've got two old tractors there in the county, John Deere tractors. I think I can get more money over there in bond and bond, and it'll give me enough money to buy another one, another, another new one, so I want to take him over here. I'll take him myself.
Set a motion.
I move that we approve it.
Second, you know.
Move in second. Discussion. All in fair, please, say aye.
There's going to be a contract involved, you're going to bring it to you if you can say it.
Okay. Well, I guess, can you make that part of the motion?
Yes, sir.
That you authorized me to sign the contract?
Yes, sir, of course.
Is that okay with your signature?
Sure.
Okay. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11 is an action item, and this to approve installation of streetlights at, I guess, this Commissioner Peña.
I move that we approve it. Second, you know.
Move in second to approve. Discussion, you know, just, and, and I know y'all are aware, but every time we add more lights in the county, it's more expense to general fund. So, you know, just to keep that in mind, that takes away-
From the road and bridges?
Or from road and bridge, yeah, where, yeah. It's more expense for-
I explained that to Commissioner Peña before.
Yeah. This, this next year, we should have savings on our power because of the contract that was approved. But, you know, and if they're needed, they're needed. I certainly don't have a problem, but, you know, just, we have to be conscious.
There's a lot of need for lighting, but we still got a bunch of lights in our yard that are not in services, that we're still getting built for, and-
There's a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, we, we have a bunch of those. And the last time that we had, what's the name, Reina Johnson or Lee? Lee Jones?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what he asked was that, when, when your people are out there at night, each pole has a number to take down the number, and then we can report it to them, and they'll come and fix it. The, the bigger issue that I have is that we're paying for streetlights that don't belong to us. They belong to the city of Riera, they belong to the city of Gruia, they belong to the city of Roma, they belong to the city of Escovares, and yet, we're paying for them.
There are a whole bunch of those too.
Yeah, at some point, we need to get a-
There are a bunch of them here in the city. I think we should look into that, and all of these people are annexing, but they don't want to do, they want to annex the property, but they don't want to, they don't want to provide the services, and they're, and they need to pay the, the streetlights, so.
Yeah.
This one, this one that we just passed, Spur Street, it should be in the city of Roma, no?
That's what I'm talking about, yeah. You know, and, and, and we're, we're paying for it.
Well, why don't, it's in the city of Roma? Why don't we transfer it?
I don't know.
Because it's within, this light is within the city of Roma.
It, the Spur Street is in Roma?
Sí, atrás del Tigre. Trás del Tigre.
Okay.
Well, we should look into that, to transfer all those lights that are-
You know, let me, let me see if I can get a couple of summer students or something to ride around at night.
The best people are the fire departments.
Or the fire departments.
Your honor, but to sign out where the, the streetlights are located, or in the city limits, or where are they at?
Okay, what, what we could probably do is get the maps from 911 that show the city limits, and then have the fire departments go, well, but then again, we, we need to get from, from CPNL what lights we're paying for. And then, and then if they fall inside the city limits.
We need to make a good audit on those lights.
Yeah. Let me, let me work on it. Come on, Tony, I can say it.
There's a lot of money going-
You keep you busy for a while, huh? That'd be nice.
Let, let me look into that.
I'm sorry, where did we end up? I don't know if the motion was made or-
Did we vote on it?
Is it voted? Yes.
We did?
No, no, we didn't vote. No, we, we, in discussion, I started discussing about the, the expenditure. We, we hadn't voted on it.
So, there was an ask, Commissioner, I talked about, we said we didn't, and I wasn't sure.
If it's within the city, you made the motion, I did.
You did, Mr. President, you made the motion.
Okay, just, can we go back? I move that we approve it if it's not within the city. If it's within the city, go. Is that an order? No, I don't know.
Okay. Is that, is that your second?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
And why don't we tell them, so we can talk to Commissioner, let's table it. Commissioner Peña, so he should let know the city council that they need to, I mean, come through with something.
You want to amend your motion?
Yes, sir.
To table it?
Let's table it, Commissioner Peña, just. Wait till, is that an order? I move that we table it.
Okay. Is that your second, Commissioner?
Yeah.
To table?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is a request for a loan from the general fund to pay PO 109824 in the amount of $13,506 to Rio Delta for services rendered for the CIBG contract, and this will be reimbursable. We just need to pay him so we can do the paperwork.
Second, move it.
Move in second. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution on the hospital district, on the joint meeting that we had with the hospital district, and this is just where we go on record saying that, as was presented in that article in the paper, we feel it's not in best interest for our residents, our taxpayers, or our patients, and for that reason, we do not support the joint Starr County, Hidalgo County Hospital District.
I move that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 18 is an action item to approve the purchasing of 19, 2018 John Deere backhoe, loader, and trade-in, 2002 John Deere to Doggett Machinery. Commissioner Watson.
Yes, Your Honor, I want to trade that backhoe in Doggett and buy a new one. I do some more.
Is there a second? Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 19 is, I guess, similar, is to purchase a new John Deere backhoe loader from Doggett Machinery.
I do some more.
This is from Commissioner Science. Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Items 20 through 28 are budget amendments. Mr. Carter, are they in order?
Yes, sir, they've all been reviewed and down to be in order.
I move that we approve the budget amendment.
I second that motion.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. It is 11:20, pursuant to section 551.074 and 551.072, we will go into executive session to discuss order salaries, the possibility of purchasing some real estate, and the possible action on permission for right-of-entry to do some survey. We'll be back shortly. It's 12 o'clock, and we're back in open session. The items that were discussed in executive session, one was order salaries. Is there a motion to?
I move that we approve the order salary.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 30 was the possibility of purchasing some real estate for a cemetery for the county.
I move that we authorize you to start negotiating, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second. Allow me to negotiate. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carry. And the last thing we discussed was permission for right-of-entry for surveying at the bridge in Roma.
I do some more, Your Honor.
I second the motion.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I do some more.
Second motion.
Moved in second. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Attorney.